We all set?
Yep.
Okay, let's do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Larry, say a few words, you can.
Let's not do that. Heavenly Father, we thank you that your word says that blessed is the nation whose God is the Lord, whom you choose to give an inheritance to. We thank you for America, we thank you for the third vaccine, we pray for your favor on our country in the production of and the distribution of vaccine to somehow be spread across the land. Father, we thank you for the leaders gathered together tonight in this room, and we pray that you will grant them wisdom, wisdom from above, that is peace-loving wisdom, that gives consideration, wisdom that gives guidance for the decisions that need to be made. And so we pray for your favor on them and their families, that you would guide and direct the leadership of this community to make decisions that would somehow promote the welfare and the benefit of all. So, Lord, we commit this meeting to you, knowing that you go where you're invited. And so we invite you into this room, into this meeting, into the people's hearts here today, and ask that you guide and direct us, in your name we pray. Amen.
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 Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pastor.
All right, let's start by opening up the public hearing on the tax cap override. Make a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made second to open up the public hearing on the tax cap override. All in favor?
Aye.
Vote, carry. Anything coming in on the wires, as they say?
Is there any input out there?
Are there any input out there? We do not intend to override the tax cap.
Is, all right.
We just have to...
Okay, let him read the question.
First question, is there a proposed amount in the preliminary budget?
Proposed right now is we want to stay within the tax cap. The only reason we're doing this is a mere, let's say, a formality, that we have to ask to do this in case we go over, so we don't get penalized.
Just in case something happens.
That's the main reason we're asking to do this. Can I answer the question?
Now, I would hope everybody understands there is a limit on what we can raise it, which is 1.00131, isn't it, Joey?
1.0131 is this year's allowable levy growth factor.
Now, that's the tax levy. Because we've had a reduction in the total amount of property that we have actually been able to tax, we dropped 1.3 million dollars. The actual tax rate, which is different from the levy, is about probably something close to 2%, maybe just underneath that, is still legitimate, but you have to understand there's a difference between the two. So you may see a taxable increase, it looks like it's more than what we actually raised it, but the levy can only go at that 1.131.
And the taxable property that we lost was where the new behavioral facilities going for the county, Brakes' building, I think there was a property over on Maple Street, the veterans got an increase of helping them. But anyway, look at it, we lost 1.3...
1.3 million.
Yeah, 1.3 million dollars worth of assessed value, so that's a good chunk to lose. And I know the township lost a considerable amount more than that.
But the intention is to keep the services at the level which we've kept them and to not raise taxes. God willing, the creek don't rise, we should be able to do that.
Any other questions?
Simply a formality.
Any other questions? I don't see any.
You have a motion to close this portion?
I motion to close the public hearing on the overriding of the tax cap, second.
Motion made second to close this section. All in favor?
Aye.
Close, carry. Now, we need to go ahead and us vote on this, as to whether we want to do this or not. Okay?
Yep, they need to make a motion and then...
I'll make a motion that we be able to override the tax levy.
Second.
Okay, motion made second to agree to, if we need to go over the tax cap. All in favor?
Aye.
Close, carry. I need a motion to open up the second public hearing, which is on local law two, water rates.
I would make such a motion to open up local law number two on the water rates.
Second.
Motion made seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, carry. Okay, on this portion here, it's been posted as what the whole reading was correct. Local law, that was posted as what it was at the beginning. Basically, what this is going to be taking, why we have to raise this, is we have some unfunded mandates, which is testing our wells, all five of them, and it was just given to us, what, three weeks ago? And it is going to be adding another $7,000 on to what our yearly costs are for testing. And then we are also looking at an increase of $6,000 on a well rehabilitation, which was a price that was increased due to probably them with COVID and everything else they had to increase. So those are two of the main reasons why we have to raise our water rates because of these. Any questions on that?
Any questions?
Village of Walton, local law number two of the year 2021. A local law to amend the municipal code regarding water charges in the village. Be it enacted by the village board of the village of Walton, section one. The following provision of the village code is hereby amended to read to 52-11A. Rates for water services shall be as follows. One, metered rate per quarter, 1,000 gallons, $5.95. Minimum charges per quarter, $47. This is a capital improvement charge and is charged regardless of water usage or lack thereof. Section two, this local law shall take effect upon the filing with the Secretary of State of the state of New York. It's kind of a thing where we're kind of bent over on this one, we can't do much about it.
Say it's unfunded mandates that they've handed down to us, that's going to cost right there $7,000 right off the bat, so...
An unfunded mandate.
Any questions on there?
A question was answered, there's a follow-up. What was the previous rate?
Forty...
$5.83.
Forty-five, eighty-three?
Forty-five dollars, eighty-two.
No, $5.83 per thousand gallons.
Okay, five eighty-three, was that one, or was that the other portion?
It was 44.25.
Okay.
So we've got a difference of 13 cents per thousand gallons. And the other part was the infrastructure.
We got to start helping get some money, I think we're going to have some infrastructure that has to be done. Any other questions?
No additional questions.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve local law two?
I second.
No, we got to close the public hearing first.
We got to close the public hearing first, yeah.
Oh, excuse me.
Motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Sorry, motion made second to close the public hearing on local law two. All in favor?
Aye.
Close, carry. Now, entertain us.
Make a motion to pass local law two.
I second that.
Okay, motion made and seconded to pass local law number two, water rates. All those in favor, say it by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, carry. Abstracts and payments, has everybody had a chance to take a look at the bills and sign over?
Yes, sir. I move that we pay our abstracts. Second.
Motion made second to pay the abstract payments and of invoices. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, carry. Department heads, is Cedarwood on? I don't think they're going to be, but just in case anybody was.
Let me go.
Okay. I know with Cedarwood, they are, Steve, you had a, like a piece that they wanted to bring up?
I do. There's requests before us that the board authorize a purchase for one BJM shredder pump from the USA Blue Book Company at a cost of $2,015.95. The pump is used as the clarifiers for pumping inorganic material and water to the sludge thickeners in the existing structure. This is an 80% village, 20% New York City cost. Out of line item number G08130.415/515. It's a necessary piece of equipment and it needs to be approved by this board.
Probably wasn't budgeted for.
No, it's in the budget.
Oh, it is in the budget.
There's still money left on that line.
Sorry, you said that was 80/20, Steve?
Yes, yes.
JDS20.
My motion, motion to make the purchase?
Second.
Motion made second to purchase the pump for Cedarwood over the wastewater treatment plant. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, carry. Federal Engineering, Bill?
Bill, you're on if you are there.
Hear me now.
There you are.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Losing your audio there for some reason. Yeah, you're chopping in and out.
The shit went off. I'll try to speak up a little bit.
Yep.
There have been a number of different funding applications that have been applied for and are in the process of being applied for. And notably at the wastewater plant, the board authorized applying for an INI study that was submitted to Environmental Facilities Corporation here a couple of weeks ago. We should find out about that here in probably about two months. So we'll look forward to that. That was applications to funds, an INI study to look for water coming into the system that shouldn't be coming into the system. Right now, probably about a third of the flow that comes into the wastewater plant is flow that shouldn't be coming in from leaking pipes and some pumps and things like that. So we want to better identify that and get rid of those flows so we can reduce the operational expenses at the wastewater facility. That grant was for $100,000. There is a local match of $25,000 required if it's awarded. So we wait to find out on that. A second funding application that's currently being prepared, the village retained Blower Associates in the system preparation of an application to the Community Development Block Grant Program, which is administered by the opposite community or no. That program, the villages, we're looking to apply for about a million dollars. There's no local match on that program. It's actually the first year that the village has been eligible for that program based on some updated census data. Applying for about a million dollars to replace one of the clarifiers and one of the sludge thickeners, both original pieces of equipment to the wastewater plant. They were installed in 1973, and they're getting tired and need to be replaced. So looking to apply for funding to hopefully get that funded at no cost to the village. Some other kind of work referencing the Speedy's permit. The state has a requirement that mercury minimization plan is prepared and implemented. That plan was prepared this past year as a requirement of the Speedy's permit. And what that really requires is that the village goes out and identifies potential sources of mercury that could potentially get into the wastewater system and into the wastewater plant. The wastewater plant and really no wastewater plant to take mercury out. So the state looks to make sure that none gets into the system. So that requires going to some of the different industrial users and medical places, the hospital, dentist office, places like that, working with those property owners to make sure there's no potential getting into the system. The state by mandate, everybody that has a wastewater plant has to do it. So that's something we need to advance. The initial plan has been prepared, just need to work with the village, code officer at Cedarwood, to go through the implementation stage. So that's something to touch base on. Over the past month, we submitted a proposal to DEP, excuse me, it's a DEP, to replace a number of valves, Steve bought it in the sand building. There's 14-inch flood valves that are in place that were installed in 2000 that open and close to allow flow into the individual filters. One of those valves is actually failed and a temporary replacement's been put in place. And a proposal was put into DEP to put in new automated valves to allow for better operation in the facility. So we'll wait on determination there. With that being in the sand filter building, that would be 100% city cost. On the water system, going back a little bit, but the village was awarded funding to upgrade the water system, a $1.2 million grant and an $800,000 loan. The state is still processing that application. It's been awarded, but pretty much everything last year was stopped from them releasing monies. So we're waiting for that to advance. But that is anticipated to move forward. Switching gears a little bit, we have a number of different programs that the village has worked through with the Catskill Watership Corporation in cooperation with the Flood Commission. One has been the Third Brook Bridge. This has been going for many, many years, looking at different activities to replace that existing valve in front of craft at the intersection of West Street there, to have a wider span structure, which is definitely needed. It's been recommended in the flood assessments that have been prepared. Unfortunately, none of the agencies that are involved have stepped up to initiate funding for that. An application was submitted to CWC to try our hand there. CWC currently is holding that under the direction that they'd like to see DOT commit funds there. DOT has indicated that they're not able to commit funds to that project. They would accept a new structure if it was installed and provide maintenance on that. But at this time, they're not able to commit funding to that project. So that's something we've talked about at the Flood Commission over the last couple of meetings and probably need to go back to CWC and see if there's any way to work with them to advance the project, the funding that they potentially will be able to apply. So kind of dusting off the application that went in a while ago and, you know, re-submitting that before their report based on what a DOT stands. So that's floating around. Also, something that's been talked about over the last couple of years is looking to conduct a drainage study in the village. This is something that the town initiated here a couple of years ago. The village looked to kind of piggyback on that study with identifying places in the village that have drainage issues and potentially would benefit from drainage upgrades that could be funded by CWC. I know a couple of years ago, the hospital took advantage of one of those programs to upgrade some of the stormwater systems at their site. CWC has funding to provide, or has a program to provide funding to do a study across the entire village. We kind of look at it as a whole to take inventory and stock of what existing systems are in place and provide recommendations of this is where things should be added or cleaned up or enlarged or whatever it may be. The, an application was put in a little over a year ago to kind of piggyback on the one that the town had done. The way that was structured, it did like the CWC's guidelines, so it was how... In talking, her technician over the last couple of weeks on program and had reached out again to the village.
I'm sorry, Bill, Bill, we lost the last couple of sentences there.
That study would fund up to $50,000. There wouldn't be a local match to the village. It just needs to follow CWC guidelines. So if that's something the board wanted to advance, we could look to do that. Similar to that project, but different, the Delaware County Soil and Water Conservation District right in Walton, they also have funding available to go towards upgrades across the village and across the county in areas that are within the watershed. Right now, they're selecting pre-applications to implement things in the stream management implementation program, which will are later flooding and stream erosion and things like that. The village has had a couple of programs or projects funded through the program. South Street with the, there's chute valves were installed along the river to prevent the slope from leaving in along the road. That was done in part with this program. Village has also awarded funding to protect your utility crossings this past year, and that project is underway with soil and water leading that charge. There's, I think, 14 stream crossings in the village of water and sewer lines that cross the different streams. A number of those after the 2006 event were washed out, damaged, and we lost water service for a couple of days and things like that. There's things that can be done in the stream to prevent erosion, to prevent damage of those utility lines. And that was applied, funding for that was applied for and was awarded. And since soil and water is advancing there. They have the ability to provide funding again, something that was talked about at the Flood Commission here earlier this month. And they solicited for, right now, the pre-applications to the program, where you just kind of take the snapshot and say, hey, we think we might have a problem here. And can we come out and look at that with a soil and water? And if they say yes, then they would submit, or then we could submit a full application to the program. There's two sites right now that were identified in talking with soil and water and also Butch, the DPW. There's a spot over on the fairgrounds along the bend of the river, and there's a ice lake utility pole that's right along the edge of the river. The bank continues to erode, that could jeopardize that utility pole and the fairgrounds. And that utility pole provides power to the chunk of the village. So it would be worthwhile to look at protecting that stream thing. There's another spot along West Brook near the Currie Wells that is eroding as well. And that's in the vicinity of one of our well sites and also a sewer line that connects craft to the village system. So we're trying to minimize as much erosion on those areas as possible. So looking to submit those two pre-applications to soil and water and start that process to see if there's the ability of protecting infrastructure in the village. And that's, I guess, the last thing I have to touch base on. The only other thing on our agenda is the Highway Garage. Previous state senator, Senator Metzger, has secured funding to implement that project that's currently on hold, unfortunately, with the state and their budget and the health crisis and all that kind of stuff. I know the village has reached out to Senator Metzger's replacement, Senator Marucci, to try to make sure that that grant doesn't get lost in the cost and anything. So we'd encourage, you know, keeping with them and making sure that that advances as slowly as it is. But still, I mean, so...
They were, they were expecting an update from DASNY?
Okay.
Either this week or next week.
DASNY is the administrator, it's a dormitory authority. That's who they use to administer that program. So that's good. That's something that's better than we've gotten in six months. That's good. I guess there, I don't have formal, maybe I do, I don't know. I don't have formal asks, but on a couple of CWC projects, the Third Brook Bridge, I guess, looking for some direction from the village, I would like to proceed there. And then if the village would be interested in applying for funding to do that drainage study with CWC funding.
Does anybody want to?
Do we need, excuse me, do we need a motion, Eric?
Yes, if we're going to do something, yes.
On the drainage study, that if we're going to apply for funding, that probably would need a motion. And I probably should have had that on my agenda, I apologize for that. Third Brook Bridge, we already have an application pending with CWC. It's currently pending based on feedback from DOT or any lack thereof. So I think it's really just, you know, a letter to CWC to say this is, you know, this formally is the status. Talking on the phone and trading emails, but probably a letter from the village, you know, stating...
We do have that one letter.
Or to us.
We do have that one letter, Bill, that's from for soil and water to do the stream management implement program and subgrant, pre-application attachment. That letter here is ready for me to sign, if that's something that we want to go forward with.
Yeah, that's, you know, if the village is, you know, comfortable doing that, we recommend, you know, there's enough commitment at this stage. Right now, it's just kind of testing the waters with soil and water to see if there's funding available for those couple of projects.
And it makes sense to do it, I mean, it's... It makes sense to do it because we've got the, some main power coming through there, and that one line is really close to the bank, and it does need to be taken care of before, you know, we could lose that pole and potentially lose some power on the side of the river. And as far as the other one over by the Currie Well, that needs to be done before it erodes over more into where the building is. So I think it's worthwhile to look into both of them. I don't know what the board thinks, but I...
I agree, you know, it's, we talked to Green and Soil and Water and we talked to Butch about, you know, potential needs, and this is kind of what we came up with.
Yep.
Anything we can do to avoid any surprises down the road is good.
Proactive, it isn't bad. So we just get a motion, then if we could get to just the supporting letter, we'll sign it, we'll, we can get it up to Soil and Water to let them know that we are in support of this, both of those projects.
So can I make a motion that the mayor writes a letter to...
Signs a letter.
Sorry, we have to sign.
That the mayor signs the letter to move forward with both of these studies.
Second.
Motion made second for me to sign those two, or that letter for those two projects. All in favor?
Aye.
Close, carry. Got anything else for us, Bill?
No, probably not for one night.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you. Have a good night, folks.
You too. We'll go on to Public Works. We've had a chance to take a look at Butch's report. He's got one thing he's asking us to send Brian to Pool School. It's easy to say.
I think Brian could teach Pool School.
But he needs to have...
I would like to make a motion to send Brian to Pool School.
Remember how much that was?
Two forty-five.
Two forty-five?
Second motion.
Motion made second to approve Brian going to Pool School for two forty-five. All in favor?
Aye.
Close, carry. Public Enforcement, Dan, it's good to see you here on such a blizzard.
Not too bad, not too bad.
Thanks for making it up.
I knew you had a quick little report for us, some things that are going on.
Yes.
Okay, let me...
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So we have some issues with sidewalks, I think they're being screwed up. I have an issue with a going property, I don't want to say it on a public, but... Property in town, ongoing problem. Shut the electric off on a tenant today, probably going to be one of the coldest nights of the year. He shuts the electric off on, so he's got open work permits. He hasn't complied with some of my orders of remedy. So I'm going to put stop works on him. What else we're saying? Let me see. The report kind of outlines the monthly activity.
You just started interrupt, just to speak up a little bit, the mic.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're okay.
Trying to think anything else. Oh, I did, do you want to talk about the community? No, okay.
That was a quick little report.
Yep.
But I do know that you said there was a problem with one of the, or some of the permits that were out with that one property.
Yep. It's ongoing.
It's unfortunate, it's ongoing. Anybody got any questions for Dan?
No, sir.
Okay. Thanks, Dan. Police Department. I'm just taking a look in at the report, monthly report sent out. They do have, the chief has one request, and that is to send Zach Finch, Officer Finch, to training CED, which is the tasers, for $100. And when he comes back, he'll be able to, he'll be able to teach our guys. I don't remember the date. I know it's not really important. We just want to know that he wants to send him to this schooling. Motion on that, if that's what.
I would move that we send Officer Finch to Taser Training.
I second that.
Motion made seconded to send Officer Finch to training for tasers at $100. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Trustees Reports. Let's start off with me.
Well, sir, there's very little report. It's February. We've been having the, the trails groomed for cross-country skiing and, and walking. And we're anxiously awaiting spring. The theater unfortunately is still closed and we are anxiously awaiting it to reopen.
I will say that the Austin Lincoln Park area, where they used to park and then go ride their snowmobiles from the trails, has been busy. There was a little bit of a trouble where a couple of them were out riding in the field itself. And I talked with the club and they're very good with taking care of their own, leasing their own. And they stopped, they put some signs up and it hasn't been a problem. Not that it was a big problem, just to, to keep them off the field.
Oh, it's, it's been fantastic to see this last time.
The thing too is, I'm gonna have some numbers probably for our next meeting on businesses that have been taking advantage. I know Featherstone has, I know Speedway has, TA's has. And I think there's been a couple where they've come in and they parked and walked.
Clinkers, obviously.
Clinkers has gotten some, so. And not just here, but I mean, now that they can get through here, get fuel, but they've also gone and they can get to some other places by stopping here to get fuel and walk. I've seen a lot of snowmobiles at the Speedway getting fuel. And I think if things work out well and maybe with the club, we can maybe get it so that they can go use maybe some of the other businesses in the community too. So, I think it's something we can look forward with.
Absolutely.
I mean, take your thunder on that one, but.
No.
Anything else?
No, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Eric?
Yeah, the Walton ladies auxiliary are proposing the village participate in Hometown Heroes Veterans Banner Program. Something that's been done in communities around this area.
Some of the neighboring ones, and I think it's a nice idea.
Yeah. The idea was to start it off at the bridge, the lampposts on the bridge. And, yeah, it's a good way to celebrate the legacy of our community.
They're gonna have a little more proposal for next month.
Yeah, yeah, next month they'll be, they'll be there. They'll have some questions about logistics, putting them up and things like that. But a bridge will cross later.
Yep.
No one intended. But, yeah, I think that's, that's all I have. It will be funded by the families. So, there's no village cost. The only cost would be assistance without being put up. But, yeah, next March, sorry, next meeting will be on to give a more detailed presentation.
Okay.
That's it?
Sounds good. Dick?
Yes, our police department did. We do have a new vehicle. It lives in Syracuse. Getting a little decorated enough, so it'll be easy in the city. We don't really have a date that he's gonna be here. We hoped he was gonna be here by the first meeting. But obviously, it's not here. It's paid for and he's bringing, but he showed up.
At least that's gonna be marked on patrol car. And they're getting everything all put into it that needs to be and transfer it over. They're gonna transfer a few things to it.
You're saying? But they have been, I think, two hundred and eighty, they call it, this one?
Ooh, that was a short month.
Yeah, I would point out, they do a lot of assistance to other agencies, the United Fire, technical warfare, it's a lot. It's not all, it's not all, you know, all industry, the rest is speeders.
Yesterday, we had a deal where the, the lights were out on Main Street and they were on the spot down there directing traffic.
Anything else? Steve?
I can report that the wastewater treatment plant is running well. We have experienced a few high-influent chlorine issues and we are working with the craft plant to address that situation. The new non-portable water pump has been installed by the W2O company and is running well. The Seabird Influent Pump work is to begin as soon as the parts are delivered to the village from the WTO shop. And they will contact us as we schedule that project as soon as possible. We have all good news from the wastewater treatment.
That's good. Is that it, Steve?
That's it.
Good. My report, short and sweet. Only thing I've got is we have a request from residents over on Darnish Street on their water bill. They want to know about setting up payment plan. And we have looked at this and if we gave them until the July 5th? Correct me if I'm wrong, Joe?
Before the, yeah.
Before the 5th. So, if we look at the next four months of giving them payments on what they have, because right now it is a bill of $5,687.57. Roughly, if we just gave them a chance to pay over the next four months of $1,725, that should get them up to snuff and right to where they need to be when the next bill comes out and needs to be due in July. I know we don't normally do some type of payment plans, but we have since COVID. And I don't know what the board's opinion is on this or what you would like to do, but there's some numbers to look at if that's what the board wants to do. So, open for discussion, man.
Does anybody want to entertain a motion?
I would entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we extend a payment option to the resident for the bill, which is exorbitant, but it not exceed four months.
The date of July 5th.
I would second his motion.
Okay. Motion made seconded to go with the plan of a payment plan, not to go past the four months of payments.
With approval of the clerk.
That's good.
Does it work?
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. We draft up a letter and we'll send it off to them. All right. The next thing on the list is the 2021 budget amendments.
Any questions?
Yeah, everybody I've gotten the, I'll give the amendments.
Multiple copies.
Got no questions?
No questions, Dan. You want a motion on this, Dan? Please?
I want a motion that we.
Accept the budget amendment?
Yeah.
I second.
Motion made seconded to accept the budget amendments. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Thank you. You have nothing else? Anybody else have anything else? Because I'd like to go to executive session because we have to talk about two contract things. You have a motion?
Motion to go on to executive session.
Marken? Motion made second to go to executive session. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry.